The September 18th meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Coughlin.
Here.
Mr. Lally.
Here.
Mr. Muhammad.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 21, 2025, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Mr. Treebosser, please read the closed session statement.
Yes, Madam President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussion will be held in closed session will be regarding personal matters and privacy interests, and the information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reason for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carry. Please rise for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
Motion by Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Coughlin.
Here.
Mr. Lally.
Here.
Mr. Muhammad.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coughlin. Do I have a... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Madam President, none were received this time.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the months of July and August.
Thank you, Madam President. I present to the Board the following reports for the months of July and August 2025, the monthly report of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. "The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy for those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with a specific agenda item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak." Anybody like to speak on the agenda?
Good evening. Tom Maris, Forbes New Jersey, and I'm not going to miss my opportunity to talk about the agenda tonight. In that regard, I'd like to talk about the finance and insurance. It's not numbered on any particular page, but if you go to finance and insurance page, number one, the Board of Education approves the payment of bills in the amount of $9,538,325.32. I'd like an explanation of what is included in that because if we look at what happened just a month ago, that number was $4,685,389.66, so that's a tremendous jump of almost $5 million. Can you please explain what is entailed in such a large volume of difference? Also, I noticed that the... On point number five, that the budget for the year has yet again increased by $94,128 for an MCEA grant. Can you explain what that grant is and how it will be used? And I'd just like to point out that the total increase on January, again, August 28th, in the school board budget went up by $18,915,308.47. I'm sure a lot of people are interested into why, particularly in light of the fact that our school enrollment has gone down considerably, somewhere around 360 to 370 students, and we can talk about it a little later on. But those are my questions for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wolfman?
Mr. Maris, as far as your first question, for the bills that are being paid this month, if you'd like to send me an email, I'm happy to share what we can with you on the bills. It's a huge bill list. To go through each one would be impractical, but I'm happy to share it with you. As far as the MCEA grant, that is a grant that's given to us by the Middlesex County Education Association because we have one of our staff members who's active with them. So this grant covers the salary of that person. And as far as you were asking about the large increase in the budget from last month and the different months, so when we do a budget, there are items that we don't know we're going to receive that we cannot budget for because we may not receive them. So I don't remember the specifics of what it was last month, but again, you can certainly email me, and I'm happy to share that with you. But we see these every month where we get different items coming in, and we have to adjust the budget accordingly because there's no way for us to know and budget for something if we don't get, we're going to be in trouble, as you well know.
Yeah. Budgets are always a wish list, more or less, and what you're planning on hoping was going to go.
Mr. Maris.
The only thing I wanted to add very quickly, though, you do have CAPRA reports, correct?
Mr. Maris, I apologize, but I did ask if you were finished in this.
No, just clarifying. He said I could ask him for the reports. I can also ask, I believe I already did, for the CAFRA, which is a certified accounting.
Please send him an email to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, but that's the rules. Okay, moving on. Superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Thank you, Madam President. I have 13 items to present to the Board this evening.
Do I have a motion for the super-
No motion.
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treebosser, second by Mr. Coughlin. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Communication, Policy, and Planning, Mr. Muhammad.
Madam President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 10 recommendations. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Muhammad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Postorino, please provide an overview of the 24-25 Advanced Placement Report.
Madam President, our Advanced Placement Report was presented at tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'm pleased to report that there were 25 subject area exams offered in our high schools this year and demonstrated 919 students taking over 1,746 exams. Our students averaged a 3.2, which indicates that about 71% of those exams will likely result in our students receiving college credit.
That's amazing. Thank you, Mr. Postorino. Also, would you please review the 24-25 Dynamic Learning Maps?
It'll be my pleasure. The Dynamic Learning Maps is an alternative assessment, just for our families in our attendance tonight, designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities. It aligns with academic standards and focuses on measuring the knowledge and skills of these students in subjects like English Language Arts and Mathematics. The assessment's typically taken by our students in our special education programs who meet with a specific eligibility criteria. It provides a way to evaluate their learning progress in a more accessible format compared to the standard assessments. The assessments are administered one-to-one via iPad with our classroom teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Postorino. Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Agenda, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 19 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treebosser, second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Finance, Insurance Agenda, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following nine items.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Muhammad. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Madam President. The Buildings and Ground Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treebosser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Dining and Transportation, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Dining and Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolfman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Coughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. I abstain on the name of Linda Treebosser on item 20.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes on all other items.
Any yes from me? Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
I don't at this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any old business... Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board?
Madam President?
Sir?
I just wanted to share with the rest of the Board. I received a letter, or an email, from a parent from the JFK Band Parents Organization, and there seemed to have been some miscommunications and misunderstandings with the mode of transportation for the equipment for those organizations. So years ago, the district took retired school buses, which meant they were no longer legally allowed to operate transporting students. And they took the seats out of them and equipped them with some rudimentary shelving to be able to transport the band equipment. Those vehicles were close to 20 or a little over 20 years old and no longer became worthwhile safety-wise or economically to maintain. Being a school district, it'd be very difficult to justify to the public in the community to buy three brand-new, 54-passenger school buses in excess of $100,000 each to remove all the seats and not using to transport students. The administration, with the Board's support, bought three box trucks. These box trucks have the ability to be somewhat customized to provide services for the band organizations, which is what I explained in my response to this letter. It seemed to me that there was a breakdown in communication between this particular parent and the other people that are in charge of it at the schools. And I think if they follow the... What they used to do in the past, because I don't think any of the procedures changed through transportation to acquire the vehicles to transport the equipment, that they should have no issues, even into the fact where if the one box truck isn't enough, they have other avenues and other resources available to them. What I commend the administration on doing is by buying these box trucks and keeping them as an undesignated per-school gives them the ability to utilize this equipment year-round as opposed to just being for a short duration. I could suggest to the band organizations that if they wanted them to be more identified for their individual schools, then they could certainly, you know, get banners or some kind of magnetic signage for the sides of the vehicles to identify them when each individual school is using them. And because they can be removed, they could then be put back on whenever they're getting whatever vehicles they need. And I also believe, I mean, unless things have changed since I worked here, they pretty much know what the competitions, the football games, and all their needs are for the band well in advance and should be able to coordinate with their band director, athletic director, and individual schools through transportation to meet their needs. So I just wanted you to be aware, I wanted the Board to be aware of my response to this parent. And I appreciate them reaching out to us because certainly, you know, we are here to represent our constituents, and that includes all of the residents of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treebosser. Are there any other Board members wishing to...
Yes, Madam President. I'd just like to highlight two events that involve our students. First is the Columbia Marching Patriots. They're having a car wash fundraiser this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Evergreen Center on Inmanav. And then the second event I'd like to highlight is the North Jersey Young Marines. They're having a clothing drive fundraiser next Saturday, September 27th, at Columbia High School at Door 14. Drop-off happens between 8:30 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Madam President. I as well would like to highlight an event that could be beneficial to some members of our community. The Historical Association of Woodbridge is hosting a clothing drive on October 10th. The drop-off is at 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that's at the Woodbridge History Museum.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. I too have two events that I just want to quickly mention. National Public Lands Day, Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There are volunteers needed, encouraging Woodbridge residents and businesses and schools to participate in cleaning up and beautifying our parks. At the Ernie... Woodbridge River Celebration, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., it's a free festival. Enjoy food and music and help clean up. The other thing is the youth centers will be opening. So that's for the middle school students in the three locations, being the Evergreen Center, the Highland Grove Youth Center, and the Acacia Center. And I believe the date of those opening are... Oh, I think they've just opened, 9:15? Is that correct? I think it's correct. 9:15 for the youth centers for the middle school students. So that's all from me. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights they may impact. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments so as to not interrupt your five minutes of opportunity to speak.
My name's Henry Enrow from Ford's. I'm here about the trucks for the band students. The school buses originally held 270 square feet each. We had two at Woodbridge High. If you got a 26-foot box truck, that only holds 192 square feet. If both schools or all schools are at competition on the same day, that's one truck per school, which means that space is inadequate completely. You also said that there are alternate ways to get the equipment there. I'd like to know what those alternate ways are, considering we are not allowed to bring instruments in our own personal vehicles. I know for a fact, because I've been loading those buses for four years, and we barely get the stuff in every year. So I need to know what are the alternate options, how big the trucks are, because 26 feet, one of the biggest ones, will not cut it. And I'd like to know what your idea is to actually have these kids have all their equipment at each show, each time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Enrow, am I saying your name right, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I was just answering his question.
I think we've got to wait till... My advice, to wait until the end of all the questions, I think it's probably better.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
We're just gonna... There's probably a number... How many people, just if I can, I'm sorry, Madam President. How many people here are here to talk about the band situation you're all intending to speak about? Okay, it's probably... My advice to the Board, and you guys do whatever you want, is to hear all the questions, write them down, do your best to answer them at the end, because there's some of this stuff, obviously.
Okay, so I'm gonna... I'm gonna take under advisement.
Okay, go ahead.
So I met yesterday with... I spoke to all the administrators from all of our three high schools, because my concern is this: The email that went out to the principals and the athletic directors that was shared with the band directors went out in March. The reason why that went out in March, six months ago, was for this very reason, right? The last thing I want to do is get to a season and be behind the game. I don't move band equipment. I'm not the guy to do that, so I'm not going to tell you this is how I would do it. My approach with that is the same as when we order Chromebooks and they go to the schools and the schools give them out as they're loaded with through tech liaisons, because that's our expertise. When I met with the principal, talked to the principals yesterday, I said, okay, so in March, Mr. Sinelli, the transportation supervisor, sends out an email to the principals and the athletic director saying the buses are decommissioned, they're not safe, right? We're hemorrhaging money. I think we all agree that they had certainly come to the end of life. The box trucks were meant to be outfitted however the band directors saw fit so that they were interchangeable. When I spoke to Mr. Khan, I said, "Mr. Khan, I don't know how I would do it. That's your job. However you see fit, we're happy to support you. I have no interest in taking something away that was breaking and not replacing with something of value. That's not... I'm not in the business of making bad investments on behalf of the district because it's taxpayer money." So I have to be candid with you. The idea that I sent it out to the administration for the band directors to have discussions six months ago, I don't know what they did at that time. There was a breakdown in communication, and that is why I reached out to the schools yesterday and said, "Did you not have a conversation with your band director? Did the band director not have a conversation with the parents to say, 'What does this look like?'" And when I said to Mr. Khan, "Have you seen the box truck?" He said, "No." I said, "Okay, I'm not really sure what else has to happen other than letting you know we have them." If it were me, I would've said, "Yeah, let me take a look at it and let's talk about..." I would've probably talked to the other band directors, which was my recommendation, and say, "Does it make sense to outfit all three the same way? Would we outfit two for certain instruments?" I don't know. Like I said, not my area of expertise. But we are happy to support you in outfitting it in whatever way that looks. I encourage them, I get magnets. Why? If you're taking two box trucks and it's a Woodbridge game, throw the Woodbridge magnet stickers on. I have no desire to not celebrate this, but I also can only get the vans there or the box trucks there, and then at some point, it isn't coming upon the band directors to work with the administration and say, "Hey, this is what we need." The statement I sent to Mr. Khan is, "I can't answer a question you don't ask." And he said, "No, I didn't ask." I said, "Okay." He said, "Can we put a second shelf in? Because the top of the box truck is pretty much useless to us unless we can use it for storage." I said, "Yeah, that... I would have no problem with that." The idea was to buy something that was utilitarian, that when they weren't in service, we could keep them running. I think one of the big issues with the buses, when they weren't used, they were just sitting there. And I passed a lot of them with, you know, a broken window or flat tires, trying to get parts, you know, as Mr. Treebosser said, they were getting old. So the goal was to get the band directors, three vans that were interchangeable, three box trucks, moving trucks essentially, that are interchangeable, and to outfit them however you see fit. I can't do that for them. They have to tell me, or better yet, tell their athletic director and their principals, "Hey, this is what we need." Yeah, we... Administration was on board. We wouldn't have bought them if we didn't think they were going to outfit them and use them. I wouldn't have spent the money. I invested the money with the idea of, yeah, make them yours. That's what they're meant to do. They may not be dedicated, say, "Well, one goes to Woodbridge, one goes to Kennedy." No, I'm not going to do that because if there's one home game and you need two box trucks, take two box trucks. That's what they're there for.
It wasn't about personalization, it was about space.
Right, but I can't customize the space, and I can't tell them how big it is or have anybody from transportation bring it to them if they don't ask.
The whole thing is it's not about stacking. You can't stack. Most of the instruments are marooners' xylophones and large equipment that's on wheels, they have to be straight. It literally took one whole bus, 40 feet, to equal all the marooners', the drums and everything, took the whole floor of one bus. There's no way it'll fit on a box truck.
Okay, well, I understand, but I also can't buy three brand-new buses. I don't know that this Board would've supported it had I thrown that idea out, but the idea of we're going to buy new buses to take the seats out, still have windows...
What about an enclosed trailer? I believe that Woodbridge High had actually bought an tow-along enclosed trailer, and it's actually sitting behind the school, not being used, because I was told it needs to be registered and insured with the township before we could use it, and that if we did use it, it would have to be used for every school, not just Woodbridge High, even though the band parents purchased it themselves.
I'm unaware of that. If the parents purchase themselves, that's the first I'm hearing of it, to be candid with you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Heather Petrie from Island. I am a mother of a junior at JFK Marching Band. We do appreciate the trucks. Believe me, we know that the buses were falling apart. However, this Saturday, we're lucky. Colonial is not competing, so we can have our old box truck and two other box trucks, because I believe Woodbridge is competing. You're not.
If the parents purchase themselves, that's, that's the first I'm hearing of it, to be candid with you.
Okay.
Good evening, my name's Heather Petrie, from Island. I am a mother of a junior at JFK Marching Band. We do appreciate the trucks, believe me, we know that the buses were falling apart. However, this Saturday, we're lucky, Colonia's not competing, so we can have our old box truck and two other box trucks, because I believe Woodbridge is competing, you're not. Next week, this is where the problem starts. What happens when all three bands are competing on the same day? Because next week, all three bands are competing in different places. How do we transport all that equipment? JFK has the biggest band in the district. Our front ensemble that uses the box truck, and use most of the dilapidated bus, our pit has grown twice the size as last year. Now, my husband is our equipment manager, him and our assistant band director were outside at 8:30 last night, measuring the trucks, measuring all our indoor percussion stuff, all the drums, to see if we can fit them. They're not going to fit. Not going to fit, and we have a 40-minute drive to Hightstown this week. Next week, we will be in Jackson. How, okay, so Woodbridge is going to be in Jackson also. I mean, we're trying to make this work, but it's not fair to the kids. I've been loading these buses for four years, my kid's been in band since eighth grade. I know what it takes. Supposedly, the past band parents and the band director have asked for a lift for the trucks. We have to literally, someone up on the truck, three people on the ground, lifting all these instruments in there. I mean, you guys are more than invited to come to our school on Saturday at 5:30 and watch us load, because it takes a good hour, hour and a half to load these buses. So, like I said, we're willing to work with everything, we're appreciative of the new trucks. But what's the solution when we just had our biggest equipment vehicle taken away? And again, what happens if everyone's competing on the same day?
Again, Ms. Petrie, we'll talk to the transportation supervisor, you said they use a box truck in addition to the buses they use, so I think that almost answers in part. I know, Mr. Enrow, you talked about other, we do have other box trucks, other vehicles.
Apparently, we were told we can use the old one that we used last year, that's still in JFK parking lot.
Okay, I don't know who supposedly, I-
I don't know, this was all brand-new news to us.
None of it's made its way to me. So, the idea of a lift gate, that wasn't shared with me. So, I, again, I'm going to go back to the, this is why we rolled it out in March, right? I rolled it out in March because I don't have an immediate answer for you with resources a week before. No, I don't, not with the opening of school two weeks ago and 24 schools to run. It's why I put this out in March. It's why the-
Which I understand, again, like I said, we just found out this week.
Yeah, so-
The parents did.
And I'm sorry that's the case, but I can only, I can only tell the administrators of the schools to tell the athletic director, to tell the band director, and I'm going to say this, when I spoke to the band director from Woodbridge High School, and then talked to Dr. Parry, who relayed it from Kennedy, they were under the impression that everything was on the even keel. They were under the impression that everything was set and ready to go. So, I appreciate it, but I give it to the principals, because I have 24, and they run their buildings, if they need something, they let me know. I try to get them the information as early as possible. I thought a six-month jump was enough time for everybody to sit down, use the summer, coordinate the meets, the concerts rather, talk about what schools, look at the schedule, yeah, that's, in my mind, that's what the end of spring and summer was for.
So, one more question.
Sure.
Like, next week, when all three bands are competing, we're not going to have enough room, are the parents supposed to rent a truck now? And are we supposed to pay for it? Is the school going to reimburse? These are questions that parents have asked me.
Yeah.
So, I'm relaying their questions.
I'm just gonna, the process is, we don't really go back and forth, and we completely understand, and we hear what you're saying tonight, there's, your questions are important, and we want to help you solve them.
Okay.
Yes, the other parents will, we want to, we want to help you resolve these issues.
We would like that.
Yes.
Is that the end of the band questions?
I think if they call Transportation, they'll figure it out.
Is that the end of the band questions?
Sorry, is that the end of the band questions tonight? Because I just want to be able to, what's that?
It sounds like there's going to be one or two more.
Okay, Mr. Lund, can we just?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I was just buying them a little time.
Okay.
Good evening, Jennifer Detlefsen from Island. If we do, as the Band Parent Association, or the parents have to rent a vehicle, who's responsible? What's the liability? What's the, you know, who's covering us?
Insurance-wise, you mean, or?
Anything.
Yeah, I'd say from a legal standpoint, obviously, the renter of the vehicle is the one who's responsible for, for everything, including the insurance and any other added, you know, features that you provide the rental. So, at the end of the day, the renter is the renter, and the renter is responsible.
But, yeah, but that's not going to work.
If I'm, I'm just going to say this, from a procedural standpoint, I know there's a lot of, you know, who told who and what, and there was a breakdown in communication. From my chair, and I'm just going to ask you to appreciate my perspective on this, we look at budgets, my job is to figure out with the board, is there a spot to allocate money? What can we purchase with it? What can, how can we utilize it? Right? And we did have this discussion last year to talk about what this looked like. When we rolled something out in March, with the idea of, hey, listen, it gives everybody ample time before the first concert, before the first competition, before anything, this represents our district. I, I want nothing but success for them. So, I share in your frustration, because something that, we worked really hard to carve out money and make a purchase, and shop it around, and get what we could get, and I don't know if anybody's gone bus shopping or box truck shopping last year, vehicles are not cheap, and they're not easy to find, giving it to the administrations and the school in March, in my mind, was ample time. That didn't happen. I understand we are looking at it as, we're going to come to the meeting, we want answers, next week is it? I'm not going to have answers for you. I don't have answers for you. I don't know what is about, what I do have is the process. So, what I would say is, have your band directors talk to your athletic directors, have them call the transportation supervisor, if we need to talk to Town Hall. The mayor has always been very giving, as far as a partner with sharing resources for our students' benefit. I'm not looking for you to spend the money. I would prefer, if that, that was the absolute dead last resort, because I don't want to see money that you fundraised and worked for be put to something that maybe we have an alternate suggestion. I'm with you on this. But to, in fairness, we put out what we could put out, we gave the schools what we could give them, with the idea of, tell us what you need, and we will address it, right? We have tradesmen, it's about outfitting it, tell them what we need to order, and we'll have it installed. If we can't, we'll take it to our mechanics, if they can't do it, we'll outsource it. My point is, we'll put it through and siphon it through the process to get you what you need, but we need time for that. I provided time for that, I provided six months for that. I'm sorry that there was a breakdown in communication, I am disappointed in various entities that it wasn't communicated properly, but it wasn't. So, we're here. I encourage your band directors, after they speak with you, you know, the representatives from each band, go back to your athletic department, speak to the athletic director, if he needs to bring in the principal, have them call the transportation supervisor, this is what he does, Mr. Trubosser did it for a couple decades. Whatever they have available, especially if it's on a Saturday, we will pull those resources, if it's a matter of calling Town Hall and saying, hey, is there anything you can spare? We will, you know, not to, maybe this is a poor choice, but we will bang the drum in terms of where we can get any resources, so that the last resort is you spending money to rent something.
Right. We're doing the, we want to do what's best for the kids.
I don't-
They're the ones raising the money.
No argument.
And I think it should be fair to them to take the money from that, to rent the-
Understood. And I, and I appreciate, listen, I go to football games often, I see a lot of students from Claremont, and kids that I coached in the band, in the corps, yeah, I want to see them do as well as anybody. Why? They're representing us, they're our kids. I understand how hard the band parents work. No, I've never loaded a truck, but I've raked more fields, and rolled out more wrestling mats, and lined more, I know what it is to wake up early, and that's your day. And I am so thankful for that, we have parents that are as committed as you are to making sure that these things go. From our, from my perspective, we tried to be as supportive as possible with acquiring the resources and getting them to the schools early. That breakdown is disappointing to me more than you'll ever know, right? This is the first meeting, we packed the school two weeks ago, we got 14,000 students, give or take, back in 24 schools, the last thing I thought was, hey, you know the few hundred thousand dollars you spent on box trucks? Yeah, it's not working. Yeah, I'm as disappointed as anybody. That being said, we want to help you find a resolution. That is the process I would follow. Athletic director, principal, make sure they're on the same page as you and the band director, call the transportation supervisor, whatever we can figure out, we will, and if we have to call for outside assistance to see if they can help us, we're happy to do that.
And I will reiterate, we are very thankful for the box trucks. I mean, really, we are. It's just not enough.
Understood.
And I think you understand that at this point. But, we just want answers, like everybody else said, we're willing to do what we have to for the kids.
I know yous are.
But-
I do, and I'm not, I'm, I hope you don't perceive me as being combative.
No.
I'm not. If I was combative, I would've said, hey, the buses are out, figure it out, which I would never say. Why? They're our kids, they're your kids. I want to see it, I want to pull up in something nice with magnetic thing, yeah, I want to represent Woodbridge, Kennedy, and Colonia as well as anybody, this is my home too. I'm with you.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the band parents?
Bruce Banco, Avonel, New Jersey. I'm just witnessing that there was definitely a breakdown in communication here. Can't cry over spilled milk, but I'm just sitting there and wondering, you're getting rid of three buses, and you asked the directors what they needed, why didn't you just get the same square footage as what you were taking away? So, if you're getting rid of the buses, you should've got something that fit the same amount of equipment in the box trucks. Is there bigger box trucks out there? Can you return these and get bigger ones? But now you're, you have competition coming up, and there's, what's the solution? Like you said, maybe you can ask the town, Public Works might have something, but it just seems like they're getting screwed, where they have no answers, except you're on your own. But it goes back to, kind of goes back to where, you should've got the same size box trucks as the buses that you got rid of. That's, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Banco, I hope you don't take as what I said as they're beat, or they're screwed. I just went through an entire process to recommend a possible solution, so I don't know that that's inaccurate. Yeah, I could go back and say, hey, yeah, what it could've, should've, yeah, if you could do it all over again, agreed. But we can't, so we're going to do the best we can to try to help.
Hi, Kelly Willard from Island. I guess my question is, where did all our shelving go, and everything that we put into those buses? And then, is there any proof of this communication? Because according to what we just found out, since we only just found out this week, that was all communicated, that we needed our bus, we needed this, we needed that, like, so, under our understanding is that you guys knew what we needed. So, losing our bus, and only getting a box truck, whether it's two box trucks, that don't fit our equipment, isn't enough. So, where is that disconnected? And how can we get proof that you actually spoke to all of the directors and figured out what was actually needed?
Okay, so, are you done asking your question?
Yeah.
Okay. One, I don't have any emails or anything to me from anybody in the high schools regarding any bands about, we need X, Y, or Z.
Okay. Didn't you say that you spoke to all of them?
From the band?
All of the schools on what we needed to replace the box trucks?
No, I said, yesterday, I reached out to the, I spoke to the administration from Colonia High School, I spoke to Dr. Parry from Kennedy High School, and I met with Mr. Khan, Mr. Ward, and Mr. Osborne from Woodbridge High School, yesterday.
Didn't you say in March you sent it out to everybody and you discussed?
Mr. Sennelly sent an email in March.
Right, and that you said that everybody got back to him what we needed, but you've been told that-
No, that's not what I said. I didn't say they got back to me on what they needed, I said, Mr. Sennelly-
Nobody got back to you.
Mr. Sennelly reached out to the high school principals, you're making a face and I'm answering your question.
I was actually, sorry, I'm sorry, that man over there was agreeing with-
Okay, I-
I apologize.
No, I'm just trying to answer your question, I mean, I understand everybody's upset, but I'm being as honest with you again, you want proof? I sent an email, Mr., I spoke to Mr. Sennelly, Mr. Sennelly, as the transportation supervisor who houses this, right, the box trucks are at his yard, that's where they stay.
Yeah, I don't know where they are, they're at our school.
Okay.
Since March, they were-
Oh, no, I'm saying, oh, okay.
Okay. I think you're misunderstanding, and I just want to, I do want to like rein this back in, and I do appreciate the conversation. In March, an email went out to all the schools from the transportation supervisor regarding the box trucks being purchased. This board approved the purchase of the trucks, the buses were in disrepair, they weren't working anymore, they were a danger on the road. I understand that Woodbridge's broke down more than, more than once. The buses were not taken away, I hate, I hate that thought, because I, to take something away from the kids is not what we want to do here. Replacing them with the box trucks, and an email going out to the schools in March, which I did see, nobody came to the board, nobody came to the administration, that it wasn't good enough until, until recently, and that basically, we're scrambling here as much as you are, to try to figure out to get you what you need. There are other buses that you could potentially use, but they'll have seats in them. You know, there may be some, you know, time adjustment to what you need to do, and we're very apologetic for that part, but we couldn't have changed anything that's happening now without the communication.
So, I guess was there communication, that all the shelving, that we built into all these buses?
That I, that I don't think that we-
Like it's just gone?
Any one of us knows the answer to that.
We can't even transport it to a new bus.
So, if it's okay to, if you don't mind, wait till tomorrow for an answer for that? No, I'm just, we don't know, right? I mean, there's no way that we know right now.
I wouldn't know what's in the shelving. I wouldn't know where the shelving is, I'm-
Right, no, so maybe tomorrow we can get an answer for you through the transportation department. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
So, I'm Beth, I'm from Ford, I have had two children graduate Woodbridge High Marching Arts, and I still have one actively there. The other thing is, we have older buses sitting in the compound. You're taking buses that are obsolete and unsafe, and we understand that completely. We've had a bus break down doing 20 miles an hour on the turnpike last year, coming home from a competition. I felt horrible for that driver. But at the same time, we have buses that are older, why not replace the buses that you're taking away with these older buses? You know, you could always use the money to buy new buses in place of that. That would've been an option, we could've taken the seats out of those older buses that are sitting there, and just re-outfitted them for something else. You're already taking buses that are 20-plus, so let's take a 10-year-old bus, and outfit it for the band, you know, replace them with what we're getting taken away. Wouldn't that be a reasonable situation too? Like, you know, instead of just box trucks that aren't going to fit everything in the buses, you know, or in the box trucks, I mean, you know, all the equipment. You know, I've loaded those buses, my husband, my children, we've all loaded those buses. The ramps aren't safe, the drivers are unsafe driving them, we get it, but we do need the space. And that's going to become an issue when we're all, like JFK said, Woodbridge High and JFK are going to Jackson next week. Three box trucks aren't going to cut it for all of our equipment, as well as theirs. We both have, you know, decent-sized vans, so there's got to be some kind of solution in play for this. And I understand you might've reached out back in March. Back in March, we were still competing, we were doing indoor percussion, you know, so we were all still really busy. Maybe they didn't see the emails, maybe there was a miscommunication, but something has to be done now, being that these seasons are starting, and we are representing everybody from this district, whether it be from Ford's, or Island, or Avonel, or wherever. We have kids from everywhere in this township, in these programs, and it doesn't need to be taken away just because we can't get their equipment there. Or say, one school can go, because they could get all their equipment, but the other school can't. It's not, it's not fair to them. They work hard all summer long, all winter long for these programs, just like the football players, just like the cheerleaders. It's only fair that they get the right, to take their stuff with them as well.
Okay. I'm going to defer to Mr. Trubosser on this.
Okay, I just wanted to answer some of the other questions that were asked, if I, if I may, just to go back. So, I was a transportation director here from 92 to 2009. The bands have gotten significantly bigger since I was here, however, when we used to do it, we always had the ability to get the box trucks from the municipality to be able to pick up the overload. And I'm assuming it's not just your band musical equipment, but it's also your props and other things that have to go to these competitions, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the grandstand.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's not, somebody had said it was the instruments, but I believe it's a lot more than just instruments.
It's props, it's the colored cards, though.
I understand, I'm just clarifying. So, we have always had the ability to get additional box trucks out of the municipality for these types of events. We also, because I said earlier that we do know about these things earlier, if transportation is aware of it, they can make other vehicles available that don't have seats in it, i.e. as Ms. Bourdan said, the wheelchair vans. Those seats are usually set up for wheelchairs, there are not a lot of seat positions in it, so there's a lot of extra square footage, and they have a lift. One of the ladies, I don't remember who it was, brought up that you're having difficulty having to lift the equipment up.
That was me, we have to lift all this equipment.
Okay, these box trucks, I'm gathering, don't have ramps that pull out, or is the equipment too wide to wheel up?
No, they have nothing on them.
They have nothing.
Okay, so, as Dr. Massimino said, the first thing I would do is tell the band director that we need our carpenters to make you an effective ramp that you can wheel your items up and down in. They don't take up a lot of square footage, they lean up against the wall, and they're certainly easily done, put up and taken down without any, any concern for anybody getting hurt. I believe that'll make your jobs a lot simpler. I was a transportation director in another district, we used to rent a 26-foot box truck with a lift gate, only for the competitions, and that was it. They didn't take anything else, and they were able to fit everything in. Now, I'm not saying that their stuff was lesser, greater than yours, or they were better at packing or not, I'm just saying that if we have a 20-foot, 26-foot box truck, we should be able to navigate enough that a secondary vehicle should be able to make up the difference. And I think the only way to do that is to physically look at it and see if there's any kind of partitioning that's needed. The other question somebody brought up was that, we bought a 26-foot, why did we buy a 40-foot? Well, we probably could've, but then we would've gotten probably just one, and then that would've been it for the district. Because unfortunately, whether everybody likes to hear it or not, costs come into play. So, we allocated a certain amount of dollars to try and provide as much, and I know this may not be a great word, equity for all the schools, to be able to provide a vehicle for every school, to be able to use as a starting point, and then there are supplemental vehicles that can be acquired if necessary. if necessary. Now, as far as renting a vehicle, I don't know what your budgets are. I know that the district and the board allocates money every year, or every couple of years, to refurbish equipment and refurbish uniforms and things like that. Maybe in the future, the band directors may decide that they want to set aside $2,000 or $3,000 to cover those additional times when you have to bring your full ensemble and all your props out to get something like that done. We used to even transport a golf cart on, on the back of the truck. So there are a lot of ways to do it, but if you talk to transportation, I am sure that Mr. Sinelli and his team are skilled enough that they can resolve your issues. I know we're under the gun, but certainly if come tomorrow morning, these communications go out, they may have time to get some things in place quickly. But certainly, there's no one who's sitting up here, and I can't speak for administration, but knowing them the way I do, there's nobody up here who's concerned about not doing the best for the kids in this district and providing them everything they need. What's paramount is that the parents and the board, and most importantly, the parents and the administration of their home schools communicate thoroughly and effectively. One lady asked about an email. I saw Mr. Sinelli's email back in March. I didn't see any other emails going the other way, so I don't know, as you said, they had other competitions, maybe they missed it. It's understandable, but not an acceptable excuse. Because now we're in a situation that the students and all of you, unless I'm misreading you, are extremely frustrated where we're at today. Is that a fair statement? So they, they can't let those things drop by the wayside. And Dr. Massimino spoke very eloquently about that, that, and not happy about it, and I don't think anybody is, especially the band parents, but I'm pretty confident that transportation will be able to get you where you need to be somehow, some way, but you gotta communicate with them. Oh, wait, there was one other thing. Somebody brought up about buses, about why we can't use a 10-year bus. So when the original buses were done, the law stated that a bus was good for 12 years. After 12 years, they had to be retired. Because the cost of the buses got so significant since COVID, they passed legislation that now the buses can be in use legally for 15 years. To take that bus out of service is a significant expense because then those buses need to be replaced with a new bus, and they're running between $80,000 and $120,000 for one vehicle. So as nice as it would be, you would have to wait for a bus to be retired at 15 years, and truthfully, by that point, they're pretty well shot and don't need to be putting anybody on them, equipment or anything else. So I hope I was able to, and if you want to reach out to me with specific questions or talk to me after the meeting, I'm more than happy to give you all the time you need.
I just wanna ask, you say about getting into talking transportation. Can that come from us, or does that need to come from-
No.
No, that has to come from your-
I'm sorry. No, it should be the band director.
No. I would follow the process that I gave you. Have your band director speak with the athletic director and/or the principal. That needs to come from the building administration. It's a fair question.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, is that, is that from the band parents? Are we, at least for now, in a good place?
You heard us, you heard us all.
We, we definitely heard you, and we appreciate your-
And again, if you all want to speak after the meeting, I'm more than happy to stay around and talk to you.
I, I'm well aware of that there was a breakdown in communication, and I'm more than, more frustrated than you'll know, because opening a, opening a district this size is, is no small lift. You know, when everybody says, well, we came back for the summer. I never left. You can't. You can't leave and come back and open up a school district this size. Got it. I'm already starting to think about what this looks like. Okay, so we're gonna have to come up with a short-term remedy. In my mind, I'm thinking about, okay, what is that long-term remedy gonna look like? Right? What is that conversation with the band directors? And I was very honest with the administration. Why? Because I do believe in the chain of command, right? I'm not gonna talk to the band directors and put them on the spot. They're teaching, I talk to the principals, I talk to the ADs. Mr. Khan, I wanted to speak to specifically because a lot of the issues that I received that were from Woodbridge Township, I said, Mr. Khan, where's the, where's the breakdown? I also wanted to talk to him because I'm somewhat familiar with him. His wife was my kid's music teacher, band teacher, and I thought she was amazing. I said, what's, what's going on? Because like I said, in my mind, budget, buy it, get it to them six months early, we're good, we're good. When that doesn't happen, yeah, I, I have, I have questions. And I will be asking those questions, and the three different schools are gonna have to come up with answers for me. I'm happy to revisit this with them, and I do need you to use the school as the conduit. So if it's, if you send an email to, to your band director, yeah, copy the athletic director on it. Why? Because the band director doesn't, then it's on the athletic. This is, accountability is big for me, right? I don't, I'm not in the band. I don't organize trucks. I'm here, and I'm gonna take it because that's my job, and I'm happy to do so. I also want to find solutions, though. So despite the breakdown in communication, which will be addressed, how I need to address it with the, with the stakeholders involved, I do want to find a, a long-term solution in terms of, okay, what is going to work so that the band parents and the, and the participants of, of the band and the color guard feel appropriately supported? That, that is the goal here. I, I'm not looking to send anybody away, okay, here you go. No, no. We want to fix it now. I really want to fix it long-term as well. So please, please utilize those channels. That, that is the, that is the best way for us to do it. You know, people say, well, you know, I called you. Yeah, I, I send out a chain of communication letter, a link in my welcome back letter every September. So when I, when I see things like this, it is frustrating. Why? Because the principals are telling me, no, we're, we're good. And the band directors are telling me it's good. I can only go based off what the chain of command in, in my district tells me. Obviously, when the parents come, yeah, I'm all ears. I want to hear it. Why? Because now I have different conversations to have with the rank and file in my organization.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. I just want to say thank you to the band parents for showing up tonight. We do appreciate hearing from you guys. Your passion and your commitment is second to none, really. I mean, the participation that you guys have is, I don't know any other organization who, who does what you guys do. And I, for one, love the band because I like to do this. So we appreciate it. If there's any other questions, like Jonathan said, you can speak after the meeting or, you know, send an email. And I, I know that the administration will do whatever it is that they need to do to get you guys to where you need to be. Okay. Other public comments? Mr. Lund, Mr. Maris? Mr. Lund, I just want to say thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. And I just want to acknowledge that that was a very constructive exchange, and that's, that's what it's all about. And I appreciate the five minutes of time that you allot me each and every month for the last 28 months. Mr. Triboiser did create a perfect segue. You mentioned two words I wanted to mention today, equity and budget. The last time I was here, last month, I mentioned that I was concerned, budget-wise, that $13 million of federal funding was at stake because even though you're, no longer have a director of DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, I have a job description, the old job description, and the new one is not very much changed. And I just want to cite a couple examples where this could still be construed as DEI, just with another name. So under the job description, Director of Student Access and Engagement, it changed out. It said, we want to welcome students from different backgrounds, whereas the old verbiage had, we want to welcome students from diverse backgrounds. I mean, diverse and different to the average person doesn't make a difference. I, I guess in the form of a question, why even bother changing a word like that? And I understand Ms. Anderson had brought to light that there are equity commissions still expected from the state of New Jersey. These are mandates. And therefore, the, the language and the verbiage equity is still riddled throughout the job description. I also add a question, number five. It says, curriculum reflects the changing dynamics of our local and global communities. And I'm not really sure, are we talking about what happens in the world should impact our, our curriculum here? Are we talking about people from around the globe ending up in our school system? So I wanted clarity there. It's talking about the equity team, supervised faculty and staff within each school's equity team. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what a lot of people that I know think when they hear the word DEI and equity. There's also a language like, coordinate the student affinity clubs. And again, a lot of people look at affinity clubs as a form of segregation. Now, with that, I just want to get a little bit into what we've gotten as far as anecdotal evidence. A lot of DEI programs, and it may not be the case in Woodbridge, but Tom Maris and I had attended the St. James Street Fair, I think it was pre-COVID, and one of the graduates of the Woodbridge school system, a high school graduate, did speak to a, a sense of bullying around accepting the tenets of DEI, bullying around the use of pronouns, even if they have a conscientious objection, maybe because of faith, not believing in, in more genders than male and female. So there are people, students, that have felt bullied. It's reported throughout the country, and we've had some anecdotal evidence of that locally. And again, it shouldn't be, if it's such a great thing, and it's about harmony and, and building, you know, a, a greater appreciation of differences, that's wonderful. It just shouldn't have to be feeling like a coercive thing. We do hear a lot of times, reports in the news about dissenters from these policies, DEI, people of faith, conservatives, even centrists are routinely silenced, disciplined, or branded as harmful. If you teach children that disagreement is violence, I'll give you a, a common example. There was a time, if you questioned whether a man could get pregnant, that was considered an act of violence. Of course, a trans man with a uterus could still potentially get pregnant, but our definition of violence has shifted greatly. If you teach them that disagreement is violence, when speech is framed as harm, the one who speaks becomes a threat. And when you dehumanize a group long enough, someone eventually treats them accordingly. And I won't bring up Charlie Kirk at this time, but I do have another speech that I will give in his honor the next time I'm here. Bottom line, I urge this board to reexamine these programs. DEI by any other name is a divisive program. The Department of Education on a, a federal level is dismantling that, is putting pressure on states. Even Murphy administration is gonna feel that pressure. And Woodbridge Township, you guys have a voice. You could be among the resistance. Yes, the state can pull games with their budgets, but if you take a stand, you can actually save $13 million in our budget that will be taken away from the federal government. And the greatest impact will be on the special ed-
Mr. Lund, I'm sorry, that's the five minutes.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to respond to the comment.
Ms. Anderson?
First, when we talked about the comprehensive state mandate equity plan, I think a couple of meetings ago, we went through what that plan covers. We want to make sure that we have language assistance, tutoring, make sure we take care of our students that may have the unfortunate circumstance of being homeless. You mentioned about the changing the job description. We, we don't have a director of DEI. You're bringing up and you're saying, well, what are you doing? We don't have a director of DEI. You also talked about, one of the examples was that we changed the word diverse to different, because that's what it is. It's different. It's not, there is nothing else to that. Our affinity clubs are open to all students. Every club that we have in the township is open to all of our students. So it's not about separating. It's, that's not the purpose here of Woodbridge Township. So we do make sure that any student can join any plan, any, any group, including those affinity groups. And so I also wanted to, your other example was pre-COVID, that you talked about, you know, students being bullied around the use of pronouns. That was pre-COVID. So I also just want to make sure that, you, you keep saying that we're doing DEI. We're not doing DEI. We are following our state mandated comprehensive equity plan.
I do just want to add that my own child has participated in some of the programs, Saffron Alliance, some of the other programs that don't fit what you're saying, so.
Jawatari, Woodbridge, yes, we do have a problem. We all do have a problem. But if we get together, we can fix all this thing without any, compared to the young people, young kids, and everything else. I'm gonna be a little bit easier street. Since the school started, in Woodbridge especially, we all know what a problem would be with the traffic. Kids go to school, busing, you name it. What we find out over the, people talk about what happened with high school in Pretamboy. They closed at 35, they put the speed limit 25 miles an hour, and people just couldn't handle the, the traffic. Now, in Woodbridge, I put School 11 right here, on Amboy Avenue, they reduced the traffic at 25 miles an hour. And years before, years ago, we talked about it. Well, we got it from the state. The state's got to approve it. We know. You go to Pretamboy on Amboy Avenue, traffic 25 miles an hour between Woodbridge and Pretamboy. Now, you go by the high school in Pretamboy, it's at 25 miles an hour. I believe right over here, you got 25 miles an hour. What I see the problem is, I own some properties in Woodbridge over here, and one is, two of them on Grove Avenue, and of course, the Amboy Avenue. And there's the school crossings to School 1, and of course, Junior High School. We got a problem there. The traffic light stays three minutes or so, they would say, the cross got said so, before it changes. People don't wait, so they would drive through my parking lot, got the crosses to just get out of it. In the morning, kids want to go to school. A lot of kids close there. They don't want to wait. He's got a problem holding those kids back. In the meantime, the people are speeding like crazy there. The other day, it's a bad today, they did 80 miles an hour. Now, we gotta do something about it. I would say so, you take the, you go on Woodbridge over here to high school, the train goes by, stops in 10, 15, 20 minutes sometime. Why don't we reduce the speed of Woodbridge on Amboy Avenue, always from the beginning of turnpike to Route 9, 19? Why don't we make it 25 miles an hour traffic? If you can do it, well, you would now make rest of it, because people do speed. It's dangerous. You got five schools involved in this stretch of highway. And why don't we ask the state to allow us to reduce the traffic? Because it's important, and I think it's much better for the safety of the kids. We took all those things. So I think it would be very, very useful, and it would not hurt the people traveling. But again, check the lights and stop, stop the traffic. People speeding on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attack?
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. Lot going on tonight, and certainly I want to compliment all these parents for coming out. It's a shame that this has happened. I, I can only tell you, as somebody that's been in long-range planning, it sounds like somebody failed miserably in planning this. You certainly were able to plan for and implement and budget for DEI, and I don't care what you want to call it. We call it DEI, call it whatever you like, state mandated. You were able to do that, and yet you should have seen, foreseen the fact that these buses are gonna become obsolete and the band would need it. I'm a big supporter, and I have been for years, it's on record, of the arts. And certainly, this is part of the arts. It behooves our community to be out there and be shown, and it unites the children and the parents. So I think you better start thinking about buying some buses or the equipment that they need, if you can afford the other stuff that this town really doesn't need. That's saying, I know you're looking at a new school, and I want to thank Mr. Wolferman and his staff for responding to me when I went through a very detailed list of questions that I had in Oprah. Again, I've got five minutes, so I can't go into all of the details. Suffice it to say that I did get enough information to go back and look at where the schools have been since 2020 through 2025, pardon me, as far as enrollment is concerned. There were other questions I asked that you could not answer, perhaps for legal reasons, and I know you had legal counsel look at it, such as the average grade point average in, in the students to me, and you couldn't answer that. But schools themselves, we've actually gone from 2025, 2020 to 2025, we're down about 300 and approximately 70 students. We can break that down, and you have broken it down for me, and thank you for that. And what the enrollment changed for each one of the schools. So we started with the high schools, and again, I can't go through the litany, there's just too many of them. But at the end of the line, we're way down. I said way down, 360. I do see where some of the schools have gone up dramatically. Obviously, Lafayette School, when Ford School closed, probably took the brunt of that because they went up about 224 students in that timeframe. Other schools have done a, a great increase. Ross Street, for instance, went from 444 to 605. And thank God, we stopped those apartments from coming over here because the situation wouldn't have been a whole lot worse. So my question is, I see the budget's gone up by almost $19 million. Are you still looking at a new school? If the downturn is that we're losing students, especially in the, well, a little increase in high school, but certainly in the middle and lower schools. We also discussed bike safety. I hope you're implementing that and teaching our, having our police department work with the students and the staff here to educate children on bike safety. We see it every day. We all see it. And we all hope that no child or no individual is gonna be hurt because of the lack of safety. Dr. Massimino is good enough to go into the US News report that we had talked about where they rated our schools. He did do a great job of explaining on the AP averages, but we really didn't get into the math and science ends of it. But I do see in tonight's agenda, you have posted the number of students achieving at each performance level. And I have not chance, gone through this, but apparently it's dated July 11th, 2025. And I'd like to see how does this compare to, in your opinion, Dr. Massimino, what US News report is putting out or has put out about the school ratings. And that pretty much sums it up. I want to give you a little time to answer the questions.
So I, I have a question for you, Mr. Maris. You said 360 less students, correct?
Yeah, over the timeframe, yes.
What's the total number? So enrollment changes every day, obviously. So I'm gonna ask you, obviously, I don't want to give a number that's different than the number that you requested. What's the total number of students that you're looking at right now in terms of the date of the, that you provided this information?
Oh, for the total, I believe your current total is 13,466.
Okay, so I'm not sure if it's, they included in district, out of district, because I ran it before, and I had about 13,700 with my out of district. The reason why I say that is, 1% of 13- The reason why I say that is, 1% of 13,700 is 137 students, right? So when you say 360, we're talking about less than 3%. I say that to you with the idea of, when you're talking about almost 14,000 students, that's not a, that doesn't make a dent, for lack of a better word, in terms of, it opened up a lot of space. It doesn't. You're talking about, you know, 12, 15 kids per 24 schools, if it was evenly, which it's not. It's going to be heavier with the high schools and middle schools, so I don't, I don't see it the way you see it, obviously, because we use those, okay, so there's empty classroom, great. Is art on a cart, right? Or is there a dedicated music room? Does the ASI teacher have room for its pullout? I say that with the idea of, we're going to utilize the building to the best capacity we can. I'm also going to share with you, you know, the idea of, we don't get, not every class has 20 to 25 students in it, right? There are classes where, if there's students in a specialized program, there may be eight, right? But we have to still dedicate a whole classroom. So from my perspective, the 360, that's not a, I don't see it as a huge number, right? It's less than 3% of the total population of students we have. It is down, which, all right, rooms and variability does give us room to work, and I don't think any teacher will ever complain about having a room to put their stuff in. We have a lot of teachers that share rooms. So I do, I do see it a little differently than you, but that's fine. As far as the school that we were looking at at Hope Lawn, we're still in a waiting game. We're still waiting for a lot of red tape, so to speak, to be navigated. But we don't have any school on that side of town. So, you know, are we moving forward with it? Yeah, I'm pretty sure you complimented it when we first came up with the idea and talked about how great it would be to have a school on that side of town, because we haven't had one in three decades. So, yeah, we started the process, we're going to see it through. With regards to the U.S. News and World Report and the AP test, we don't give the AP test to kids that are just going to get a four or a five. We don't encourage students that are just going to get a four or a five to take the AP test, or to take an AP class. The goal for our district has been to open up the amount of students that take AP classes to expose them to more rigor.
I'm not interested in AP. We discussed that last time, I'm sorry.
Mr. Maris, you've got to stop cutting me off, because I don't cut you off when you talk. Fair?
Long as you don't turn up my all five minutes.
Finish your questions.
I said in the beginning, I said I'm not asking about the AP anymore.
About 30 seconds.
But I answer every one of your questions, sir, do I not?
I didn't ask you about AP.
Mr. Maris, I'm so sorry, I don't want to get into this back and forth thing here.
Come on, Tom.
I think we've known each other long enough to know that this is not how we do things.
Yeah, no. Open dialogue is a real pain in the butt, isn't it?
It's not open dialogue.
And this is, listen, I don't know if this thing's on, let me just, let me just say this, Mr. Maris, and not just for you, but in general, I'm talking to the board, you know, it's, this is a public meeting that's governed by our bylaws, our bylaws and, you know, Robert's Rules of Order to the best we possibly can. You have to have some orderly operation of a meeting. I know it's like dad coming in and telling you how you're supposed to do these things, but that's just the reality. That's why you have a lawyer at the meeting, to make sure you can have the most effective, orderly, public-oriented meeting as possible. And the one thing this board always tries to do, and has since the first day I started covering you as a baby lawyer, is that when the questions come in, whether it's Mr. Maris or any of the hundreds of people I've seen at that microphone over the years, is you try to answer the questions. You can't always answer them off the top, especially for specific line items or whatever, but you try. I know your BA and the BA before, Mr. Wolferman did the same thing, it was an attempt to do it. But one of the things I've been really strong about is the importance of making sure that everybody has their full time. And that once they have their full time and it's done, we have an opportunity to, but the back, what the back and forth does, it lends itself to the potential disparate treatment, and we don't ever want to do that. So actually, allowing you to have all of your time, or sometimes when the board chair, whoever it's been, Mr. Maris, asks you over the years, are you done? It's not to stop you, it's to truly ask you, are you done? Because we want to make sure that your full time is observed, respected, and then obviously you know that if in between meetings you have a question, or you want to see documents, and you've definitely taken advantage of this over the years, you can ask those questions and you can request those records. We're not trying to keep anything, we just want to keep an orderly operation of the meeting, that's all. So how many seconds did Mr. Maris have left? Perfect. Even more, so that's 71 seconds, it sounds like.
I want to thank you for your explanation. I also want to thank the board for at least having an open dialogue with all the people here, because that's exactly what you did. Go back and watch your own tapes. You did extend them that courtesy, and I'm glad that you did. Again, I wasn't interested in the API, we talked about it last time, I was talking about the OTC scores. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you, Ms. Maris.
Miss Madam President? I do want to make a comment. With all due respect, Mr. Maris, you did come up and you looked directly over here and said that it doesn't matter what your definition is, you're doing DEI. We're not doing your definition of DEI, I just wanted to make that clear. We want to make sure that each of our students receive the most appropriate education based on their needs.
I'm going to follow up here too, through the chair. Mr. Maris, we've always had dialogue, and I've always tried to answer your questions and be polite. No reason not to continue that. What you said up there was, I answered your U.S. News and World Report question, and then you said I had a question about how the new AP scores reflected that. If that's not what you asked, then that's fine. That's what I heard you ask, which is what I was trying to answer you.
Sorry about this.
That's okay. I was trying to answer the question that you asked based, when you said, well, I'd like to see how the new AP scores impact. Before I was cut off, I was explaining to you how we approach AP enrollment and the tests in this district. That's all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. The 370 students that we are supposedly down, which I believe your numbers, Mr. Maris, would be correct, that winds up to being 3.8 students per grade for high school, 5.1 students per grade for middle school, and 2.5 per elementary school. That does not change the structure of a classroom one iota. So even though the enrollment may be down, what it takes for us to open the doors is not impacted by that at all. So just to clarify that. And the other one thing I wanted to say was that, I don't know where treating people fairly inequitably and including everyone and giving them an opportunity to have the same things as everyone else around them became a bad thing. Because I've known all of you a long time, and I never knew you to not care about others. And unfortunately, that's what it sounds like, and I'm just a little taken aback by it, because I always believed you, Mr. Maris, Mr. Lund, Mr. John, I always believed you all to be caring people and be concerned about everyone, and that nobody should be mistreated because of any reason whatsoever. And I don't know when DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion became a negative. Because it's really not to treat people fairly inequitably and give everyone an equal opportunity. I'm sorry, that's all.
Mr. Treewasser.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ria Patel, I'm from Edison, and a few years ago, I co-founded a nonprofit called The Learning Circle. And this organization promotes peer-to-peer learning and has run programs at Woodbridge before as well. I'm here tonight to share an important opportunity that I am hoping will impact student success in this district. Last year, The Learning Circle ran programs for Woodbridge students. When we faced obstacles that prevented us from running programs in person last year at Woodbridge Middle Schools, we had a choice, to let it go or to keep going. And The Learning Circle decided to act. We brought together high school volunteers from the Edison School Districts and the Woodbridge School Districts to keep pre-algebra and algebra tutoring going on virtually at Woodbridge, so that Woodbridge students wouldn't lose support. The response has been incredibly and overwhelmingly positive. Not only did we keep this program running, but this fall, families of students and student volunteers are reaching out to us, asking if the program's going to run again. This program is something I've truly come to realize has not only impacted myself, but Woodbridge community in general. Our impact goes beyond just test scores and grades. Middle schoolers are starting to gain confidence because they have a safe learning environment. And high school volunteers are not only reinforcing their math knowledge, but they're also gaining real-world leadership experience. Together, these students from diverse backgrounds contribute unique perspectives to help one another. It's a win for both students and student volunteers. The Learning Circle has already raised $3,000 just from private donations. We're not asking for the district to cover costs, we're asking for your partnership. We need your support in finding ways to make this program work within district guidelines, whether through new models of supervision or other creative solutions to help more students. Tonight, I'm asking that the board direct the administration to work with The Learning Circle, to make sure that our program continues this year stronger than ever. Our students are ready, our volunteers are very, very excited, and our funding is already in place. I know you have a lot on your plate right now. But I also know you all are extremely passionate about helping students. Let's do our best to help this community. Thank you for your time, and of course, thank you for all you do to support students.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. I appreciate that, what you do, we can certainly open a discussion with administration, we are not entitled to direct them.
Okay.
I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you. I appreciate all your support.
Thank you very much.
My name is Bridget Farber, I'm from Ford's. I'm a second-generation Woodbridge Township graduate, my daughter is now the third. Her and about, I want to say 40 of her friends have to walk 1.7 miles to and from Ford's Middle School. I have been in communications with Mark Sinelli and Councilman Wolferman, but unfortunately, I have had no communications, and I need answers. How can you justify making an 11, 12, and 13-year-old finding out the day of their middle school orientation that they're expected to walk when the parents were told back in June that they can, that there's busing? We were only told that the kid's orientation, that there was no busing. I have reached out to people who I work with at NJIT and said that it's a guideline, it's not a rule, that you guys don't have to provide busing. The New Jersey Department of Transportation says if your student is a walker student, there are certain things that the board has to meet. And frankly, I'm a little disappointed, because my area of Ford's, where these students all live, no crosswalks, not enough sidewalks. I think there's two streets in the entire area from Gordon Ave to School 14, where there's an existing amount of full sidewalks. They're walking in the street. My daughter has to call me every day while I'm at work when she walks home. She's nearly been hit by a car twice. And she's not a small child, she's a lot taller than me, but that doesn't negate the fact that she nearly got sideswiped by a car. So my question is, why are you using this guideline as a rule and not providing busing for the students of Ford's Middle School? Bare minimum by the area, by the Turnpike. Second, why is there no effective amount of sidewalks or crosswalks or crossing guards? I mean, the closest one is at 14, there's none on Mary, where it's a main road connecting Mary Ave and Main Street. So what, a 1.7-mile walk actually is longer, because you have to find the one route that has the most sidewalks. So my question, my final question is, as a taxpayer, why is there not adequate busing and transportation and safety precautions made for these students? That was it, I promise.
That's it, okay. I'm going to defer to.
Okay, so as you referred to as guidelines, it's actually in statute. It's 18A 391, and then it references 6A 27, one or two, or something like that. And it establishes that for elementary, which is K to 8, it's two miles, and for secondary school, which is 9, 10, 11, and 12, it's two and a half miles. They have a form, I believe, I mean, I know what I did when I was there, but there's a form that the transportation and the PD go out and they evaluate it. And there's this criteria. It has, you know, the amount of trucks, the amount of the speed, the size of the roadway, there's just a whole lot of things on it. And then they go out and they evaluate, and that's what they use to determine it. As far as sidewalks and crossing guards, that's a municipal or county, depending on what road it is. I don't know what part of town you said you were at.
Ford's.
No, I know, I don't know what part of Ford's.
Gordon Ave.
I'm sorry?
Gordon, right by the Turnpike area.
Okay, so you're over by Summit, right?
Woodlake.
Yeah, but doesn't Gordon come up and then go to Summit, and Summit crosses down and goes all the way to Ford Ave? Is that, is that the area?
We're by the Liberty Tavern. We're down the street from Liberty Tavern.
Yeah, no, okay. So anyway, it's 1.7, so it's under the two miles. The problem is, is what you're describing exists throughout the township. There are a lot of parts of our town that don't have sidewalks. Most of the, most of the municipality, let me just finish, is 25 miles an hour. If there is an area that you feel is dangerous in crossing, then you should be submitting something to the traffic safety department in the municipality, and asking them if they could either evaluate it with transportation or send out a crossing guard to assist the students in crossing. But we have this situation throughout the township, Avonel, Island, Colonia, all those areas have the same type of situation. So for us to say that the situation that exists in Ford's is any different than the same situation that exists in Colonia, Avonel, Island, Port Reading, Seawarn, is any different, it's just not, it wouldn't be fair. It's got to be laid out in a fair, equitable manner that's quantitative. The other thing is, is that if we were to put back all that courtesy busing, two things happens. One, the DTRS, which is the state report, does not compensate the district for providing that transportation. And the amount of cost that it would take, the district, I mean, Dr. Massimino and Mr. Wolferman are wonderful at what they do, but they would truly have to be magicians to be able to afford to get the busing, to bus all those kids that are inside the two-mile, thank you, two-mile limit that the state provides for us. So, you know, I don't know, there's not an easy solution, and this has been going on for 30 years that I've been in Woodbridge. So it's a challenge, but I don't know what the right answer is. And they're not walkers, they're not transported. The district differentiates, there's students that are transported that are outside those two parameters, and then there are students that are inside those parameters, they're just not transported. The district doesn't say to you, at least not from when I was here, the district doesn't say, your child needs to walk to school. They should be telling you that your child does not get bus services, and that's all. If you decide that your child walks, rides a bike, commutes with a friend in another car, whatever it is you decide, you're the parent, you get to make that decision. We don't tell you how your child gets from your house to the building, but the way it's determined is the shortest distance, and this is laid out in Title 6A, is that it's the shortest distance from the closest door of your house to the closest access point of the school. Meaning that if the closest access point was the janitor's boiler room door, that would not count. So it's not just the door that's closest. And I have literally gone out with a wheel to measure the distance from the door, down the driveway, walking different ways, riding a bicycle, to find out what the exact distance is. So there are processes, if you feel that your circumstance is different than what's been described, to question it. But typically, they have been established for years, I mean, maybe there's something that has changed in the traffic pattern, maybe there's something that has changed in the type of traffic that's on that road, it could be a change in speed limit, it could be a traffic control signal that it's changed over the years, but that's pretty well been identified for a very long time.
But I just want, but I want to just clarify, I'm not arguing.
I'd be happy to talk to you about it afterwards, if you like, but I'm not allowed to go back and forth.
So you're telling me I need to talk to which offices about?
Like I said, I'm happy to talk to you.
Mr. Sinelli in Transportation.
Okay.
And, oh, he's talking about going to the municipality about regarding the.
I just talked to him, I don't want to take anyone else's time.
Thank you.
Madam President, just to interject, Mrs. Farber, just to clarify, we've had a conversation on the telephone, we've emailed back, and Mr. Sinelli told me he checked the routes previously, as Mr. Treewasser had explained, and he said he would do it again. And the last email you sent to me specifically said, I will wait until he provides that information. So that's where we're at. He explained to you that it was a busy time to start the year, and that he was going to work on it as soon as he could.
Respected board members, good evening. My name is Dromit Shah, I'm from Island Township. I'm here, like, my kids are young, they're like, he's going to be four, and like, one is one year old. I'm just here to know about the expanded pre-K program that state is implementing throughout the state. I just saw on the New Jersey government website that Woodbridge Township is going to be eligible starting 2026, as per the guidelines from the state for the budgeting purposes. I just want to know what's the plan for, like, you know, for school year 2026, if there's any plan, or if pre-K is only going to be available only for ESL students?
Is that all your questions, sir?
Yeah.[1770.82] Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shah. I've addressed this previously and I'm happy to go through it again with you. I've done this process twice. I did it once as an assistant superintendent and I did it once when I was a new superintendent, where we heard about the state giving funds and expanding this. There's a couple obstacles and I've addressed these obstacles with the powers that be because I want to better understand it. We don't have the space within our schools to have the pre-K. So we are solely dependent on the independent contractors that run the pre-K programs. They have to agree to partner with us, right? They're a private business. So the same way I couldn't walk into a store and say, hey, you have to be our partners, the same way I couldn't walk up to a private daycare and say, hey, we're going to hire teachers and you're going to teach this curriculum and here's the cap. And there are a set, there's sets of criteria, what you can offer, who you can offer to. On two separate occasions, I've reached out to every daycare facility in Woodbridge. Why? If the state's giving out money and we can make it work, I'm, I'm always intrigued. And I say that with the idea that I have nieces and nephews that would have all benefited from it and I would have saved my brother and sister-in-law some money. So I understood and I'm all about it. The problem we've run into is a problem that a lot of districts are running into in that there's not the space. The idea that once you are partnered with them, now, now it's set, the private contractors that I spoke to when they heard this started calling me, telling me, I didn't get into private business for you to tell me what I can and can't do. And I was like, yeah, I'm not, I'm not telling you anything, I'm asking. I'm not in a position to tell anybody anything. I'm, I'm not in the private sector. So it's one of those things where the state gives these grants out, but afterwards, and the question that we've all had is, so if that money disappears, then what? Where does the district then incur that? And now we have to figure out how to absorb something that we never anticipated being absorbed into the budget? And what happens if a daycare says, yeah, we're not doing, we don't want to partner anymore? What happens to those kids? So I've had meetings with these private contractors. The pre-K program expanding under, under Woodbridge Township, it's not happening right now. I would, I would love to see it. I, like I said to, you know, to the parents before, I'm not looking to say no because I want to say no. I really like saying yes. I really like making people happy, but there are just certain limitations that we have to work within. And this particular program, I think the essence of it is great, but I do think the implementation of it leaves a lot of questions. And in a district the size of ours where we're going to have thousands of kids, I need to make sure that I understand what contingencies are should a private establishment say, hey, we're no longer your partner. I don't know what that looks like. So we'll continue to work with the liaisons, you know, we have some contacts that I will speak to. You know, we speak to our executive superintendent at our county meetings, just to try to get new information. If we do get new information and obviously with a gubernatorial election coming up, I, you know, I don't think anybody knows what that's going to look like or what funding's going to look like next year. If I get new information, I'm happy to push it out through the town. You know, I know the mayor does his call. We've utilized that service for parents not yet a part of our district that someday will be part of our district. We would do, an example would be registration, which the mayor will make that announcement. If, if something does develop, I have no hesitancy in reaching out to the, to the community.
Perfect. It's good to know because like, you know, like a lot of new districts are coming up, like New Brunswick, they did not have the same space issue and stuff like that, but they are like now trying to do workout with schools to bring up the kids and like they are doing like different timing. They're not doing like for the whole day. They're doing till like 1:00, like 12:00.
Right.